Alrighty, shall we begin then? Well, I'll call the meeting to order, I guess. I'm sort of like a self-appointed coordinator, not a chairman. So if anyone else wishes to facilitate, please feel free to volunteer.
No way.
Doing fine.
Karen, can you just make note of who's on board that the entire committee is here?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. We have a slot here for public comments. There are, there is one non-member of the committee who is with us, two members, I'm sorry. Would either of you care to wish to make a comment? Okay, Garnet, did you want to be recognized?
No, I'm all good. Thank you.
All right. The third item on the agenda is treatment recommendation. Last week, last we heard from a number of experts and I think we came to the conclusion, consensus conclusion on the committee that our approach, preferred approach will be to treat the lake with herbicide. The first, will be the first approach and then study what happens from then on and perhaps design a hybrid approach, if you will, from that point on, depending on how well the herbicide works. There was, there was expertise that said we could combine using herbicides with the dash cutting, which would be one approach that sounds pretty promising to me. And so, but I don't think we make a decision on that right now. Our decision is, do we move forward with herbicide treatment, this recommending herbicide treatment for this year? Karen had some really good news from the Aquatic Doctors representative. Karen, do you want to talk about that in terms of pricing?
Um, if you give me a couple of minutes.
Sure, well, I have it in front of me if you, if you don't mind.
Go for it, go for it, yes.
This comes from, excuse me, Zach Berry. And he said he did some number crunching and got a rough estimate for 200 acres treated in Cal Lake next year. He said we'd likely be using granular tritopir, pardon me about that, to control the mill foil as a state will likely not approve the use of 24D with it being a river system. This herbicide tritopir worked very well for the city of Douglas and we expect the same results for you. The cost is $560 an acre. With 20 acre treatment area, that ends up costing around 11,200 for the first treatment. And we expect that the second treatment would be a bit less depending on the results from the first treatment. So the total that he anticipates would be not to exceed 22,500. And that number would likely be smaller due to a decrease in treatment area as well as a calculated discount for teaming up with the city of Douglas.
That for one year, Kent?
That would be for one year, right.
And Ken?
Yes.
Just for a moment, for a couple of observations. I think just, just for the record for this group, I think, I think it'd be good to repeat, you know, we had a very knowledgeable panel of experts that Karen convened. And you, please, anybody correct me if I'm overstating it, but we discussed the merits of weevils, various cutting technologies, including dash. We discussed sonar, we discussed herbicides. And if my recollection of the panel consensus is correct, the most viable alternative, or not even alternative, the most viable option to the saga appeared to be the herbicide route. I'll just put that out there, though, if anybody has a different recollection of the panel, but I do, I think it's worth us just confirming that that was the consensus of the, the experts that we brought together.
Sure, I think that's, that's exactly what we should do. It's a matter of housekeeping and going through the, the different processes that we looked at. We looked at dash and we're actually told by the dash contractor, I think it's a matter of record that we were told by the dash contractor that, that's our lake was too, too large for that process. It's too costly and I'm concerned about string up the bottom because of the PCBs in our lake. So that's another thing that I'm concerned about. Weed harvesting, I think we looked at that and said, well, this is a lot like mowing your lawn. After a few months, you've got to go back and do it all over again. And you can't get in up around the docks to get the weed harvested in the boat slips properly. We looked at adding some insects of some kind into the lake and I am totally against any kind of adding anything that's not a native species into our lake. I just think of kudzu and what, what happened there. And, and then of course we looked at herbicides and I think that it was a general thought, at least my thought, that herbicides are the way to go. And, and I'm happy that we're looking at going in that direction.
All right, let's go around the table, Karen.
Another thing that the group talked about was, and this was our expert guidance talking, not, not our group, was that using the herbicide would actually be the most environmentally advantageous method to go. Because the quicker we kill that invasive species, the faster that the native plants will reestablish. And right now, letting that mill foil go by not killing it is driving out the native species and the fish and the oxygen. So it's actually the most environmentally friendly way to go.
Good point. Any other thoughts, Tim or Bob?
I would just like to confirm Scott's report. I think he summarized it quite nicely from what, what Scott reported is exactly what I heard. Pat, you make a good point about sediments. And just for your edification at this point, I reported out to the stakeholders on the Michigan Tech Study on contaminated sediments last Friday. And I can let you see that briefing. The, the PCBs luckily right now are buried quite deeply in the lake. Though I am concerned too, that if you do a lot of dredging and pulling of weeds, you could reach beyond the six inches down where we are seeing some PCBs. But those values based on the 2019 are still well below the EPA guidelines. So that's good news, Pat.
Yes, I, we, we did a study back in, oh, it's been six or seven years ago and had a firm come in and do a complete study of the lake bottom. And we sounded for PCBs. And there is, I think with the city of Douglas, I think that's where it resides. There's a report that you might want to take a look at and team up with the report you've just done to see how things may have changed or may not have changed.
Yeah, I, I have that report and that comparison is going to be part of the final analysis, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and just, just to kind of put a bow around it, I mean, I think it was very interesting that not only the experts that are in the business seem to endorse the, the herbicide approach, they also pointed out that these other technologies, you know, aren't consequence-free, that they could all come with unintended consequences of, you know, spreading and invasive or not being effective. Or as I think Pat pointed out, you know, you're bringing in another species to potentially try to tackle a problem with, once again, unintended consequences. I think it's also noteworthy that this technology is well-accepted by the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. They're accustomed to, to dealing with requests to be, to permit this. We've got another, we had another, a number of other communities that were kind enough to join us and report that they had success with this technology. And indeed, our neighbors in Douglas have been using this, this technique with success, which I think is a great example of what we should hopefully be able to expect on the same body of water. So I, I think, once again, compliments to Karen for putting together really a comprehensive panel that I think helped us really make sure that we were looking at the best possible option and the most cost-effective option for the, for the taxpayers.
I think the only thing I would add, Ken, is I listened to the panel last week. I agree with what everyone has said, by the way. If I listen to the panel with a lens of someone in the community who doesn't know anything about this challenge. And I felt, I feel like the forward to what we just said is we went through the doorway as a committee of what's environmentally safe, what's effective and what can be done quickly to solve the problem. And everything you guys have said kind of reinforced that the due diligence that first and foremost ladders up to environmentally safe. In that, that we assembled a team of experts to get that done. So I felt like confident trying to step back, listening through that lens. Thought it was a really great meeting.
Thanks, Tim.
I agree, we, we've done diligence and I'd like to make a motion that we recommend herbicides as a treatment of choice for the eradication of the invasive species weeds that are in our harbor now.
And I'll second that, Pat.
All right, moved and seconded. Karen, you have that down?
I do.
Okay. Any discussion on this motion? Sounds like we've said it all and let's just take a vote. Karen, you want to read a roll?
Sure, sure. Bob?
I.
Patrick?
I.
Tim?
I.
Ken?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
I'm yes too.
And who'd we miss? We got Pat, right?
Yeah.
So the motion is carried and depending on how we can, depending on other businesses coming to the council, we could bring that motion to the, to the Monday city council meeting, but we'll talk to others about that and see when we get it to council.
Just one, one last thing. Do we, is now the appropriate time to discuss how we might look about contracting? You know, we've had some discussion about partnering with Douglas, using their established vendor and using the, the ability to contract without going into competitive bidding, given that it's a unique situation where there's a neighboring municipality already using the technology. Is, is that, we should discuss now or another time?
No, no, good that you asked because it happens to be the next item on our agenda. Process. Yeah, I, I think it was our, it was the consensus of all of us here that there's a lot of benefit to, to joining up with Douglas to do this. Not only is there a benefit in getting a price discount, but apparently we can, there's some, what am I trying to think of here? Benefit with the, with Eagle in the sense that we'll be doing this all in one project and it'll be coordinated as opposed to we go in with some herbicide that's not the same as Douglas's and we have different timing and so on and so forth. In addition to that, there's a clause in our ordinance that says that we can bypass the request for a proposal, competitive bid process, if it's in the public interest to join with another community in this project. So we could actually speed, speed up the process, streamline it by joining with Douglas. So I guess that'd be the first question on the table. Do we want to move in that direction? Number one. And then number two, how do we do it? Are, are we wanting, wanting to pursue the avenue of not having competitive bids?
You know, Ken, I'll start. I mean, normally I would, you know, be absolutely insisting on competitive bidding as a matter of general, you know, good governance. But in this case, given that we have a shared body of water with Douglas, Douglas already has a contract in place, there is a tight timeline to get the necessary permitting in place and the necessary approvals in place. Given that there's great confidence in the vendor. Karen has done some, some research in terms of, you know, the costs, they appear to be reasonable. The technology appears to be proven in this body of water. You know, normally I would be hesitant, but I think given the tight deadline we're under, the fact that, that there are these other circumstances that lend themselves to cooperation with, with our, with our neighbors in Douglas, I would be willing to go that route or I would be supportive of going that route. It's not something I would normally advocate. I think, I think, you know, competitive bidding and RFPs is, is very important, but this is a very important project and we want to do it right. And we have a lot of data that would show partnering with Douglas on this would make sense.
Thanks, anyone else?
Well, again, I think that we've done diligence and we would be completely justified in selecting the joint project approach. So I'm, I would, I would not be opposed to that either.
Okay.
I, I agree and the ordinance does provide exceptions. And this is a very good reason why there are exceptions. And then my second point is that we did do requests for proposals last year and we did have competitive bidding and they were the lowest bidder last year as well. And I believe that the price is the same as it was a year ago. So chances are it would be the low price again this year too.
That's an excellent data point, Karen, thank you.
Anyone else? How about, Scott?
I thought Garnet had something to say, but she was unmuted.
Oh.
He's good.
How about somebody making a motion to that effect?
Okay, I'll be glad to do that. I'll, I make a motion that we join with the city of Douglas in the herbicide treatment of the harbor this year.
And I'll second it again, Pat.
Very well. Further discussion? All right, Karen, would you like to call a roll again?
Yeah, if I can find my list again. Let's see, Pat?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Okay, that, motion is passed. The next item on the agenda is the cost share issue. We've talked about how to fund this and the idea was perhaps funding it by a special assessment. Might be some assessment where the entire community pays part of it, but the shoreline riparian owners would pay a greater share. There was talk of doing this by number of boat slips or front footage or per unit or whatever. Then there was the option of funding it from the general fund. Either from a existing operating millage, special voted millage, or we could do a headly override, all of which are going to be very politically not popular. Given the fact that now we're down to, you know, less than $30,000 for this first treatment, my inclination is to ask the city to cover this first treatment out of its operating fund, which I think we can easily do. And move on from there and decide what our strategy is long-term because clearly we're going to have to do this year after year and then come up with a permanent funding solution. What do you all think?
Yeah, I can, I would, I agree with that mostly because I think when you start associating the cost of this with boat slips or frontage, you, you, it starts to diminish the importance of the issue to a shared harbor in the local economy that's based on that harbor. And I think we're, you know, there's already a lot of people that think the harbor is about boating and fishing and recreation, not about sort of the bigger, the bigger picture. And I, I wouldn't want to reinforce that misconception by drilling that deep.
Tim, can I agree as well? And I think Tim said it well. You know, we have a lot of people that utilize the lake, recreate the lake, that aren't necessarily, you know, slip owners or owners of frontage. It's, it's a benefit to everyone that comes here and it has a knock-on effect benefiting the community. So I do think it's kind of, it's core to what we do as, as a community and what we offer as a community. So I, I think, Ken, your proposal makes perfect sense.
And Ken, clarifying question. So, so you're proposing that, that the city picks up the, the entire first year price for this, i.e. both applications? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and then my comments are ditto to the other two folks. Yeah, I always worry about special assessments, frankly, us getting into what we'll call a, a pissing match and then people lose sight of the, the big picture. And it is complicated then. As RJ would say, if he was still on the earth, would be, you know, the harbor represents the entire community, not just your slip and the galleries downtown. People are in them because it's a beautiful lake and same with the restaurants. It's a composite, wonderful community, not trying to divide it up simply to boat slips versus the greater community. It's, it's, it's going to get more complicated for the out years. But the encouraging thing, guys, is this is, not to be an arrogant ass, but this is a small amount of money. This is, guys, you know, 30K total. And, and really with the discounts, Ken, I think it's going to be well below 30. And, and this isn't like dredging where we were worried a few years back about coming up with millions of dollars. I mean, this, spreading this out in the out years with identifying the proper number of stakeholders, I think it's going to be down, I'll call it petty cash for the various stakeholders. Because we're going to have a large number to divide into that. I'll just use the 25K number.
One question for Karen, maybe to research, or maybe Karen, you already know. How is Douglas paying for their share?
They increased their boat launch fees, which brought in enough money to pay for it.
Okay. Yeah, they've got an advantage right now because they actually have boat launches. So, okay, yeah.
That's amazing that their boat launch generates that much revenue. That's amazing.
Schultz, Schultz Park has been very busy this summer.
Yeah, yeah. Any other comment on this? So, so we have a resolution to use herbicides, number one. Number two, to join with Douglas in the project. Can we have a resolution, number three, to request that city council approve this coming from the general fund? Well, and before that, Garnet, I was going to ask you to weigh in on this, given you're a council member, how do you feel about it?
Yeah, no, I, I'm, thank you for asking. I'm actually totally supportive of it, of course. I, I think what we probably should do, if thinking ahead proactively, is to communicate the levantar out of this. I think it's important that the city and the greater community know that the city is basically suggesting that it covers the cost of this. And rather than sitting quietly and just doing it, I, I think this is one of those opportunities where we work with Scott with commercial record and whomever else to really just, really, really toot our horn, for lack of a better word, that we're doing this. Because it is a good thing, as RJ would say, this is saving our local economy. So that would be my suggestion.
And in that narrative, to amplify the partnership with Douglas as another deposit in the trust bank of collaboration between the communities that we feel is important.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect, which was to ask the city to fund it out of its operating, general fund, I should say?
Also move.
And I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All right, then Karen, want to do it one more time?
Ken?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Yes for me.
Right, okay, that is passed. So we will, we can move that along. I think we'd move it along as, as one package of resolutions from this committee to the council. Another item that we should discuss that actually isn't on the agenda is a method for collecting permissions. We've talked about a couple of ways to go, that the Eagle requires that we have permission from riparian owners to use herbicides on their property. And so one way of doing it is to go out and get permissions. You knock on doors and ask people to, to agree. Another way of doing it, and I'm not an expert in this, maybe Karen, you can elaborate, would be to, to pass an ordinance that makes it the city's responsibility to treat the lake. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, I've only learned of this recently myself, but I talked to East Grand Rapids and to Norton Shores both. And East Grand Rapids did show me that they have an ordinance that yes, it is their responsibility to clean, keep the lake free of weeds. And because they have that ordinance, it is their responsibility under Eagle, not the individual landowner's responsibility to give permission. I think that this is probably the long-range way to go. It, it may not be the way this first year. One, I thought that, you know, maybe if we did that way, it would be perceived as cramming it down somebody's throat that, that we're doing it, whether they agree or not. I may be overthinking that, but it is possible to go forth and, and get the permissions, especially considering how many condos associations we have, that shortens up the process a little bit. So anyway, I'm, I'm open to suggestions. If we want to go to the ordinance route right away, it, it can be done quite quickly because it's a pretty simple ordinance. But if we wanted to, to go and get permissions, we can certainly get that process moving too.
Karen, a question, could we pursue both in parallel? I'm a little concerned that if we put all our eggs in one basket and then we get skunked, we'll, we'll lose the time window. My, my follow-up question is, in respect to permission, and I think the, the aquatic doctors addressed that partially in our last session. Okay, 80% of the riparian owners agree, 20% don't. What happens? Do they end up not putting it close to them? And then, and then help me, you know, some of our, our, our team members here. Also, I thought the aquatic doctors indicated that if you were 100 feet from the shore, you didn't need permission. We need to quantify what my failing memory tells me because that's an issue too. And we need to ask the aquatic doctors if we, guys, if, if we go with the maps that we shared in the last meeting, none of, where they're proposing to treat for 25 odd K doesn't really get close to any riparian owner. So, so I think we need to clarify permission based on the Eagle regs. Scott, not to put you on... permission based on the Eagle regs. Scott, not to put you on on the spot, but do you have any insight on that?
Sadly, no. My my specialty with an eagle is drinking water, lead and copper rule, PFOS, things of that nature. I mean, I know the people that that do the Water Resources Division work, but I can't answer your question authoritatively. Sorry.
Okay.
I did note that that when they made that comment, they said you did have to get permission from anyone that was within 100 feet of the treatment area. So that's a good question for them. Is anyone within 100 feet of the treatment area?
Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't aware of that. I thought your riparian right went all the way out to the middle of the lake. So if the Hunter Cook thing is is true, we may not have a bigger problem.
That was law when I was practicing.
Yeah, that's.
Well, I'll find out.
Okay, great.
You know, I'm I'm open to both ideas and, you know, I'm eye on Garnet and Ken to give me a sense of how people feel about having, you know, kind of an ordinance kind of put out there rather than seeking their permission. But I'm I'm I find Bob's argument very compelling. What he just what he said earlier is, you know, we have an obligation as a city to all the residents to maintain a clean, safe, healthy, navigable harbor because it's it's at the core of the economy here. So there I can see an argument being made that we have responsibility to maintain this and, you know, and that kind of is an overarching responsibility that an ordinance conceivably could could support or cover. So I I'll defer to Ken and Garnet in terms of what the attitude would be publicly to just going the ordinance route rather than seeking permissions.
Is this something that could come in through the harbor authority?
It's a good idea.
Yeah. No, go ahead, Garnet.
No. So sorry, I'm not even really officially a part of the committee, but I do recall the aquatic doctor saying, because this was a question that someone asked during that session. And I do recall them saying that they did have at least one, maybe two, who had said they did not want it sprayed. And therefore they sprayed around, which I just laughed about because it's like it's water, you know, it's going to go wherever it wants to go. So that's fine. I think in this case, personally, in the interest of time, I think the ordinance would be the best route to go. Primarily because it is a time factor. We need to get this approved and done and basically set up with Douglas and aquatic doctors for early spring. That'll be here before we know it. Unfortunately, having to go through the process of each household or condo association, that is that is going to be. We just I just don't think we have the time. So that's my my five cents worth. A part of me would like to see if anybody would even notice that that we're suggesting this ordinance. I don't know that anyone would notice. So it's my five cents worth.
Yeah, Karen, I think if particularly if it's worded, our responsibility to or we take responsibility to deal with invasive species and invasive aquatic weeds, that might be helpful as well. Because I mean, I think sometimes folks think we're just, you know, carpet bombing all the weeds, but in fact, we are going after, you know, a non-native invasive species.
Yeah, I I agree with the two of you. I think that we could go that route with adequate public explanation that it is the city's responsibility to keep the lake navigable and clean. And that this ordinance is just part of our responsibility, just like it is shoveling sidewalks and I should say plowing streets and and other things that we do, public works wise.
Good analogy.
Okay. I think all that takes us to the Clean Boats, Clean Waters Grant of $1,000 to $3,000. Karen, are you prepared to discuss that?
Yeah, I can. It was brought to my attention that there is a Clean Clean Boat, Clean Waters Grant. And the the total amount available for all the applicants is $20,000. And the amount you could qualify for is between 1 and 3,000. And what it's for is to to educate the public on, you know, how they can stop invasive species from coming into the water and such things like that. One of the things was, you know, putting signs up at boat launches, printing brochures. I'm thinking, this is me personally, that it's an awful lot of work for a little tiny bit of money that you may not even get because it's such a small pot to draw from to begin with. And why I say that is because to qualify for that amount, you have to do at least three public outreach programs. And with our little staff, I don't know if we could even pull that off. So I did forward this information to the harbor authority and they are showing some interest in it. And they do have more boat launches and so forth over in the Douglas side. So it's possible the community at large could take advantage of this. But I really, you know, I'll make time if that's the the committee's wish. But it would be pushing our our capabilities.
Yeah, Karen, I think I'm one of maybe a couple of people that sent you that 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 grant opportunity. And I agree with you completely. There are some strings attached. It would be most beneficial to a municipality or an entity that has a boat launch at the moment. You know, hopefully we'll have a boat launch next summer, but at the moment we don't. So I don't think it's a good fit for us. And particularly the cost of staff time would almost kind of negate the the small amount of the grant, you know, 1,000 to $1,000. So your your hesitancy is completely appropriate. I think it's not a great fit for us as a municipality. But if it's useful to some of our other kind of stakeholders, great. But I don't think we need to pursue it.
I think the idea of forwarding this on to the harbor authority, Karen, was a good idea. That seems to me that's where it belongs.
Yep.
Seems like a lot of work for a little money. So I agree with everybody. Let's do it. Should I back up? Do we need to recommend to the city that it create an ordinance along the lines of what we discussed?
I think that would be a good idea. Otherwise, you guys may get in bureaucratic gridlock and you don't have a lot of time.
I think that kind of ties up the package of everything that needs to be done. So let me entertain a motion to the effect that we advise the city to create an ordinance that takes responsibility on behalf of the city to to manage the lake. Karen, maybe you can or somebody can put that into the words of a motion.
I'll wordsmith it.
We have a mover?
Also move.
Tim?
That's a part.
Pat supports. One more time.
Yes, support.
Okay, Scott?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Me too.
Motion passes. This roll call stuff, by the way, is a requirement of the Open Meetings Act. So we're sorry to put you all through that. Okay, that brings us to committee member comments. Let me start with Scott, your first.
Yeah, just a huge thank you to Karen for, I mean, a really huge amount of heavy lifting and pulling that panel together. I think that really gave us a lot of confidence that we were being really good stewards of not only the environment here in Sagatuck, but but of the taxpayers' money. So I just, I can't thank Karen enough for pulling it all together. I feel very confident in our decision making.
Thanks. Pop?
Yeah, I did what Scott said. I mean, it was very efficient way to drill down on what are the long poles in the tent here and and have this committee come up with some excellent actions. I'm quite optimistic that we can get off dead center. And again, thank you. Kudos to Karen on on and Ken for putting this together for us. Thank you.
Jim? Comments?
I just I just I echo the thanks and I'm super optimistic at the work of this committee and sort of feel like it's chapter one to a book to be written about nurturing the harbor in the future, which I'm passionate about. So thank you for your work.
Thanks. Pat, anything?
Yeah, I just appreciate being a part of this group and and really well thought out. People really did diligence. And I think we can all be proud of the decisions that we've made and going down the road here with it. So thank you very much for having me on the committee.
You're welcome. Thank you for your contribution. Karen, do you have anything, any comments?
Well, I do have one that there's no way I'm going to have this written up in time for Monday's meeting. We'll get it on the next workshop. And then no, that's in the next next agenda item. I have a comment there.
About next steps?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'd like to reiterate everybody's praise of of your work, Karen. We've come a long way here. You've done a lot of background research. And you put together a great panel of experts. So a lot of credit goes to you. Thank you very much for doing that.
Thank all of you.
Yeah, thank you all. I'm not sure if this is going to be our last meeting or not. I guess it depends on how council reacts to our recommendations. But if it is our last meeting, you all deserve a real pat on the back for your involvement in this thing. We appreciate it. I'll take the liberty to accept comments from the audience. Garn and Barry and Judy are not members, but we'd like to hear from you if you have anything to say. Garnet?
Yeah, I think it would help regardless of whether or not this is the last meeting, as soon as it is scheduled at City Council. For those of you who are not on council, to attend that meeting and basically voice your support, if you will, in the public comments at the beginning of the meeting or and or at the end of the meeting. I think it would be great to have you there. So it would say a lot.
I agree. A great point, Garnet. Thank you. Yeah, I think to know the amount of work and the amount of feedback and participation in this, I think would be huge for the community to hear at at council. Yeah.
Okay, Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say also kind of reiterate what you guys are saying, but I'll tell you, this is a pretty impressive committee of community members. The experience and the knowledge that you all bring to the table. I can't think of too many communities that could do that. And to have Karen doing the support work, I love to see Scott Dean hitting the floor running. And I will be at the meeting and voice my support. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Anyone else? All right. Next item is next steps. Karen, you want to take that?
Okay, well, first one was formulate recommendation. And I will, I will write that up and run it by the committee members before anything is fully reported on. And then the next was our next meeting was scheduled to be December 23rd at 4 o'clock. And I recently found out that the City Council meeting, because of the Christmas holiday, was actually scheduled for December 23rd at 4 o'clock too. So we cannot have a meeting December 23rd at 4 o'clock. Would you like to cancel it altogether at this point and wait to determine if we're going to have one in January?
Yeah, it seems to me that our next step is to see what the how the City Council reacts to our recommendation. So to me, there's no point in meeting until after that anyway.
Yeah, I agree, Ken.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the next step was to hold a public hearing. In our work plan, we were going to report to the City Council, first meeting in January, which I think we can do that now, the last meeting in December. So because we've made such good progress. And then have a public hearing to to present it to the public. If we're going to go the ordinance route, that will also require, well, it won't require a public hearing, but it will require two two meetings where the public does have an opportunity to comment. We could turn it into a public hearing on the ordinance as well as the treatment or one or the other. I'm kind of open to, I would like to hear your suggestions there if we wanted how to do that. No way is wrong, no way is right. It's it's just what what would be the best.
Well, I've heard in the in the discussion so far, an interest in not not running this up the flagpole high enough that it becomes a cause celebre, but making it available to the public so that anybody who is interested could understand and participate in the in the decision. So I'm not sure I want to do a public hearing on the ordinance. But maybe on the whole approach, it would be more like a town hall than a public meeting in the sense that maybe I'm drawing a too fine a distinction. I I'd like to educate the public, but I wouldn't want to put the plan at risk in doing so.
You know, to have a meaningful public hearing would almost require us to have the panel reconvened that we had at the previous meeting where you went through all the technologies, you heard from the experts to repeat that process, you know, I don't know if we can pull that together again. So I I'm not sure how beneficial it would be without doing something to that degree. So I'm not sure what a public hearing gets us in terms of increasing the knowledge base without those experts. So I I don't see the need for it unless, you know, we're willing to go down that road, which I don't think is feasible, given the timelines.
Well, if we can get the, you know, a good community announcements, you know, what Garnet was suggesting, I'm sorry, I'm not thinking real well today. You know, to get that that rah rah going, you know, maybe maybe that will work without, you know, recreating what we've spent nearly two months doing. Because we do want to get community buy in and community understanding of why we're going this route. But I think if we can, you know, use our our Facebook page, the newspaper, our our regular meetings effectively, maybe we don't need the public hearing.
Have we ever submitted for the record kind of a report from a committee or a work group that sort of outlines the problem, what was discussed, what was learned, what the recommendation is that we then make available, you know, is is something to put into the record that the community can consult? So they sort of understand what, you know, all the work that went behind this.
You know, the example I'd give is is the policing contract where we actually spent, I think it was almost two years in consideration. And we did survey work and and I mean, it was a huge project. And we put it all together in the end in a report that then was reported back to council. And the public was very involved in in that. So it's it's a good approach, I think.
Just one comment is I feel like in order to give voice to the public, you have to give voice to the report. So I think we're really good at facts and process and procedure and what we found. But I think there's a degree, and this is, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Garnet, but sort of the the degree of narrative around this that we want to get ahead of is that we we looked for safety, we look for expediency, and we looked for effectiveness. And we, as humans, feel really good about the process we went through to uncover every every ounce of information that's important to all of you, kind of a thing. Like, I just think it's it's the how of how that story gets told that's really important.
Agreed.
Why don't we do this? Why don't you let me write the report? And and then I'd like you to review it and see if I communicated that effectively. I think I can give it a pretty good shot, but seven heads are better than one. So.
Karen, if you want to send it something to me to look at, I'm happy to sort of put my my workday hat on and help you with it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, and I'm sure the rest will be willing to, to review that Karen comment. Karen does an outstanding job in putting these things together, whether it's minutes or reports or whatever. So I have a lot of confidence that this is a good route to go. I think that's all as far as our agenda is concerned. Does anyone wish to bring anything else up? Then, uh, I guess we have to have a motion and a roll call to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah. Moving second to adjourn, call or roll?
Okay, Scott.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes, sorry.
Bob.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, again, for your contribution, being here. We've done some great work. It's good stuff, guys.
Yeah, I agree. Excellent.
Thanks, everybody.
Holiday, everybody.
You too.
Happy holidays.
Thank you all.
See ya.